I appreciate the history lesson and certainly there are definitely things in our past as a nation and as a state that are gladly corrected, you know, as of 2023. And I was very curious when you started to mention things that are still in place that might be barriers to voting for different segments of the population. And certainly, long lines is something that I am very sympathetic to. I've offered amendments in this committee and on the floor of the Senate to change policy so that that goes away. Is there anything else you can think of specifically as a policy? And I know that there are things that we're working on today. You know, we've got an early voting debate going on, we've got an expansion of absentee voting. So there are constantly changes going on. But anything that you can think of that might be a simple item to address in our voting laws that is a current problem that we should address through you, Madam Chairman?
I'm sorry, can you clarify in terms of, do you mean in addition to long lines?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just looking for examples of things that you feel are policies that we have in the state that create, you know, discrimination or the inability for certain segments of the population to participate. Because I'd like to know what those are so that we can address them head-on. That's just my first question. I'm going to ask you a little bit about the bill too, but I wanted to start with that at least.
Yeah, definitely. As you mentioned, we are currently still one of four states without early voting. I know this legislature is working on a plan to address that. But even though we are in the process of setting up early voting, the effects of not having early voting and accessible vote-by-mail reverberates through generations, right? And then we also, you know, as you mentioned, need to address a lack of no-excuse absentee voting because it is really difficult for folks specifically that are working people more often end up being lower-income voters of color, struggle to get to the polls. And then when they do, many precincts, like certain ones in New Haven and Bridgeport and others that are cited in my written testimony, I'm experienced long lines. So even if you're able to get a little bit of time off to vote, you know, you might be faced with a line that is much longer, you know, than you can take that time off for.
Yeah, thank you very much for that answer. So certainly, early voting, mail-in voting, I mean, those are topics that we've been debating here for a number of years, and it looks like they're going to come to fruition. Mail-in voting, it was certainly, we, you know, had significant participation in recent years. I think Connecticut's voter participation is actually pretty substantial, even if there are impediments to it. And if I could point to one thing, I would say that certainly in urban environments, the access to the polls is the number-one thing, beyond any of the other things we could even talk about. I think the failure to have enough polling locations that are conveniently located and to prevent the long lines is the number-one thing that we could probably do to encourage participation. Because I just, I know how somebody might feel getting in line, you know, to vote and stand there for, I hate lines. I don't do traffic. I won't even go visit people at certain times of the day. I'm like, no, can I come see you at seven instead of four? Because I really don't want to be doing that. So as far as the bill goes, you know, we've had this bill before us in recent years. And, you know, I appreciate the intent of this bill. You know, I became a Republican because of Abraham Lincoln. I mean, that is, to me, the driving force behind my political roots. And for me, the key ingredient was always that we were trying to live up to the promise of the founding of this country, that all men are created equal and that we have equal rights and so forth. And it's a work in progress, obviously. And Lincoln, you know, got us a giant step forward, and so have a lot of other people, Martin Luther King Jr. You know, over the years, we've done better and better. And certainly, the various civil rights acts that have existed through time certainly have advanced us as well. The bill, I am confused by, though, because it seems to, I just, I don't understand it, I guess is the biggest problem. Because it seems to say that when a judge is going to determine whether or not there is a racial disparity occurring in an election, they can use all of this criteria, but the one thing they cannot use is whether or not there is any indication of racism. The only thing that they can actually use is the results. And I was listening earlier, I apologize, I was at the dentist's, and so I was zooming in for part of the day, listening. But I heard the exchange with my colleague, Representative Francesco Francesco, with another person on this bill. And I just, the conversation really interested me because it seems to me, it's like, if a district elects someone that someone doesn't think they should have elected based on their race, that's a cause of action, even if that person was duly elected. Maybe you can help me understand what the goal of this bill is so I can really get my head around it.
Yes. So I would definitely, sorry, I would definitely recommend that you go back and listen to the exchange with Stephen Lantz and Director Francesco Francesco, because I think his answers were really on point. But, sorry, let me gather my thoughts. So really, this bill is more of a proactive approach, right? We're trying to, we're trying to note where possible instances of voter discrimination could occur before these policies are put into place. So, yes, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought. Could you repeat? I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe because I didn't ask you a very clear question. I'm looking for the substantive reason to support this policy, is really what it is. I mean, you know, I've heard that this bill is, you know, designed to fight discrimination. And certainly, I'm in favor of fighting discrimination. But I'm reading through the bill and I can't find the substance that tells me this is going to fight discrimination. I just can't. I see that there's a lot of policies put in place to measure the results of elections. But it seems to make a determination that racism existed even without any evidence that that's the case. And I guess the part that I misunderstood from the conversation with your colleague that you mentioned and the representative was really the situation where if a person is duly elected by that district, then they're duly elected by this district. So how do we know that that was the person that should not have been chosen to begin an action? And then how do we justify an action?
Yeah, so there are a lot of circumstances that the Supreme Court has noted, you know, that could include discrimination. These are called the totality of the circumstances. And that is a long list of potential factors to consider. However, as Stephen discussed, there are a lot of the analysis goes through some very talented PhDs and a lot of more substantive research on that. How, yeah.
Yeah, forgive me, I'm just, I'm just reading through the bill and trying to follow the definitions of racially polarized voting and things like that. I guess I'm going to have to do a little more homework, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. But I was hoping someone could tell me, looking at this bill, exactly where the sentences are or the policy decision that's being made and how that will combat discrimination. Because, guys, I haven't seen it in the bill. I am certainly open to making policy determinations, as we talked about from the outset, is the long lines, the failure to have enough polling locations in urban environments with high populations is the number key, key one thing that I would, I would address. Some of the other things that you mentioned we're working on, I think there's some dispute about the benefits of early voting and mail-in voting to any population or the validity of an election. But I'm sympathetic to the notion that more access is better. So, anyway, if you've got anything to add, I would really, truly appreciate it. And certainly, I'm going to try and catch up with Stephen. I know we've been corresponding. So I'm just hopeful that I can get some understanding of the bill. So if there's anything you want to add, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I won't put you on the spot. And thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. Representative Hox.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here today. I've followed your testimony very closely, and I appreciate a lot of what you said. I don't know if you were here when we've had similar conversation on this proposed bill. And I'm trying, looking for help. And you seem very well-spoken on this subject matter, and I'm hoping you can help me. As was mentioned, you know, certainly in the past, there were definitely things that were in the law that were wrong. There's no question about that. And the country has definitely come a long way in trying to address those things and still has a ways to go. And the state of Connecticut is no different. We're working hard every day here to try and achieve that. And I would agree that there are still certain barriers that are significant. I also would distance myself from those barriers since I serve in the minority in a state where I've had very little say over the policy affecting of elections over the last 25, 30, 40 years. And I want to see it better. And one of the ways you mentioned, and I think it's the most critical thing that I think people have brought up, is the lines in the cities. I've actually offered that amendment here in this committee and on the floor of the State Senate, and it's been shot down. A party-line vote. So I'd just like to make sure that you're aware of that, number one. And I've asked several people who are testifying in favor of this bill, which I'm on the fence on the bill. Certainly, the desire behind the bill, the motivation for the bill is something I agree with, and I think everybody would. The question is whether or not the bill actually achieves its stated goal. And that's where I'm really wondering. So let me just ask you a quick question. You said that the Voting Rights Act was gutted. And I presume you mean that to mean the preclearance statute that existed prior to that. Is that correct, through you, Mr. Chairman?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, all right, so that's, that's good. And this bill seeks to restore that kind of preclearance policy. I'm just curious, if it was determined to be unconstitutional before, how are we going to manage that now by trying to make it a state law?
I would say, uh, willpower of the ability to really understand that these are extremely important issues and that we need to find a way to make sure that people have the right to vote and that they have the right to, you know, come forward and speak out and say, this happened to me, this, I felt discriminated against in an election, and we need to make sure that moving forward, these specific policies that local governments are trying to win, like, put into place are not discriminatory. And so I think, just making sure that, I understand that your question is about constitutionality, and I am not a constitutional scholar. And so I would leave that more to policy experts. But I would say that if the federal government is not going to protect our voters, I am looking to all of you to protect our voters.
Well, I certainly can appreciate that, although, have you read the decision when they removed the preclearance, the Supreme Court decision?
No.
Yeah, you don't know what their reasons were?
Uh, not off the top of my head.
Have you, have you read this bill?
Yes.
Okay, so you do know that it doesn't have anything to do with someone saying, I was discriminated in an election. It's about someone, it's about reviewing potential policy before it becomes law.
I apologize, I thought that was what I said, but I must.
Yeah, which is the notion of preclearance.
Yes.
The issue I have with this bill is that, effectively, it sets up several things which I consider to be racist. It sets up this notion that somehow there is something called racial polarized voting. It creates a definition for that. Are you familiar with that?
Uh, yes.
Maybe you can tell me what that is.
Racial polarized voting of essentially the fact that there are polarizing policies in place that make it so it's more difficult for black and brown voters to vote instead of white voters, and that white voters have more of, you know, more sway or more.
Right, I mean, you made that point several times. But I mean, as far as the bill goes, we're talking about the bill and you're advocating for the bill, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot at all. But the bill defines racially polarized voting as voting in which the candidate or electoral choice preferred by protected class members diverges from the candidate or electoral choices preferred by other electors.
Mm-hmm.
The thing is, that requires somebody to get inside the head of every single voter and assumes that people vote based by race. And I don't know that that's necessarily true. And I don't know that that's necessarily more true for more, for one race than another.
Yeah, I'm, honestly, I couldn't speak to that as much as I don't think that we can get inside everyone's head as much as I would say that if this is an issue that the community is speaking about, and this is an issue that was protected and is now not, I would look to the community and what they're saying. And I believe that this is something that the community wants. And so I would support that.
And I'm, I'm talking to a member of the advocacy for this proposal right now, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
Because I agree with your sentiment and your presentation, and, but I am trying to understand what this bill actually achieves in that goal. I mean, my feeling is that we should just simply have a bill here that eliminates long lines in the major cities. I would, I would think that would be an instantaneous step in the right direction. We could actually achieve something that we can measure, and we can say, we did, we had a victory. Let's, let's do it. I don't know that this bill achieves anything. And that's what I'm looking from someone who's here testifying. You took the time today to come and tell us that this is a good bill, the community wants it, we should support it. And I just don't see how or what it does.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would say launching the preclearance program that requires local governments with recent records of discrimination to prove that proposed voting changes will not harm voters of color is an important part. I would say expanding language assistance for voters with limited English proficiency is a very important part. I would say creating strong protections against voter intimidation, deception, and obstruction would be an incredibly important part. And establishing a central hub for election data and demographic information that will empower officials and community members to ensure accessible elections are a very big part of that. And so I would say that those specific points are very big issues that I think that this bill touches on. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, that's the summary of the bill, and I certainly have that too. But the thing is, the summary of the bill is, it doesn't actually match with the language of the bill very much. And I guess we're going to have many, many opportunities to talk about this going forward. And I, and I think that, you know, I would just keep an open mind. I would recognize that there are people on this committee who want to do the right thing, and they want to support legislation that achieves the stated goal of protecting against discrimination. But we also don't believe that necessarily the solution to that is to come up with a mechanism to see discrimination where it doesn't exist, or to assume that discrimination exists where it doesn't. Or to suggest that somehow if a, the result of an election cannot be correct based on the race of the people voting or the people, the person who was elected. And I think that's what a lot of this bill does, and I just, it strikes me as shocking to the degree that it goes into that effort. Instead of simply recognizing that people are individuals, and they're going to make individual choices on who's best for them. And the number-one thing, I think, to most voters, regardless of race, is who they feel is the best candidate. I mean, this country, a predominantly Caucasian country, elected a black president twice in a row by significant pluralities. You know, I mean, I just, I just don't see the level of racism in our election policy that this proposes to see. And if there are things that we can identify, like the long lines, we should go right at it. We don't need, you know, some kind of process to do it. We can all see it with our own eyes, that if that is a bad policy, it's discriminatory, we should fix it. But I appreciate you being here, and I hope we can keep the conversation going. Because I, I want the best possible result.
I hope so too. And I think, I just want to make sure that when this conversation happens, I hope that there is a larger understanding of systematic discrimination within our country and within our state, and that is always a part of that conversation as well. And so I really appreciate your time and coming.
And I completely agree with you. I mean, all you have to do is travel to any of our major cities, and you can see that there's systemic discrimination going on. I just would suggest that it's happening from the sources of supposed help are not always helping. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here again. I've appreciated our interactions in the past very much, and they've always been very enlightening. I'm just asking, maybe you could share with the committee maybe an example of how the language that is in the Voting Rights Act bill that we're referring to would maybe correct the issue that you mentioned in the city of Bridgeport. I just think some of us need a little help putting the dots together so we can understand how one thing connects to another. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm not a legal expert on the bill, so I'm, I'm not here to, I cannot explain the bill. But I can say that, you know, there, that in Bridgeport, both in the 19, early 1990s and also, you know, as recent as our 2019 mayoral primary, there is evidence of local party, partisan actors who exploit rules and regulations around voting, and they target people, voters, based on certain identities. And one of them is their language. So, for example, somebody is a monolingual Spanish speaker. And, you know, evidence that was presented at trial that Ms. Davis had referred to earlier showed that these partisan actors, when they went to discuss voting with voters, lied to them about the rules governing absentee ballots in order to basically be able to track and control their vote. So that is going on, I've testified, we've testified about that, Ms. Davis and I, many times before this committee. And so we are, we know that issues related to voter intimidation and manipulation are happening currently in Connecticut, and that voters deserve, particularly black and Latino voters deserve protections because there is distant vote, it's almost like vote dilution and disenfranchisement happening.
Yeah, I appreciate that answer. Thank you very much. Yeah, and I certainly don't disagree with any of the things that you said. I know that we've discussed some of these items in the past. And I appreciate you coming before this committee on numerous occasions to, to point out cases of wrongdoing in elections, whether it comes all the way to being described as fraud. I will leave that up to you. But to suggest that there's no problem would be wrong, and I, and I completely agree with you. And I know that the city of Bridgeport has had some very questionable elections as far as local primaries and so forth. When you say partisan actors, are you referring to Democrat versus Republican? Or are you talking about maybe in a primary election? Because it seems to me that our previous conversations and the things that I'm aware of are more or less exclusively regarding primary elections. Is that right, through you, Mr. Chairman?
Well, that's certainly the evidence that we collected prior to 2019, was after the 2019 mayoral primary, the Democratic primary in Bridgeport. But I think that, you know, the, the issue of, you know, voter, exploiting voters and intimidating voters and, you know, the desire to suppress vote, voting knows no party line.
Right, no, I couldn't agree with you more. I just, that's why I didn't understand why you used the term partisan, because it almost sounded like, you know, one political party was doing this against another political party. And that certainly can happen, there is no question about that. But in the specific instances that we're referring to, that didn't happen to be the case. It happened to be a primary election. I don't know, I mean, you started by saying that you couldn't explain the bill to me, so I guess I won't ask you. But that's what I'm hoping for, is that someone comes along to explain the bill to me. Because I'm in complete agreement with the folks that have testified in favor of this legislation and the comments that they have made, but I don't see that those comments align with the bill itself. The bill, for, as far as I can tell, is about determining whether a policy could potentially be discriminatory in the future, which I have no problem with that either. But the mechanism that it uses to determine that, I find completely flawed, and in fact, I think I find it racist. And I will certainly bring that up and raise my objections when the time comes in the committee. I would much rather work with people like you who are concerned about these issues on finding real solutions. So to understand what happened that you're referring to in Bridgeport and be able to not only pass a law, because I think the things that you're referring to are already a violation of law. So we don't really need to create a law, but we need to have a mechanism to, to actually prosecute people when they are engaged in this type of activity. And it's got, it's got to matter. It's got to stick enough to prevent it from happening again. But I thank you very much for your testimony today, and I look forward to speaking again at some point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counselor, for being here. You probably have heard some of the back-and-forth that we've had with other witnesses that are here in support of this legislation. And you've probably heard me say that I certainly support the intent of the legislation, which is somewhat ironic, considering the actual words that are in the bill. I guess my concern with this is the, and to be totally honest with you, I'm operating mostly based on my recollection of the bill that we had in this committee last year, I think it was Senate Bill 471. And I've only just begun to really kind of go through this, this language. And I'm really focusing on Section 2 more than anything else. I don't know how well you know the, the language that is in the bill before us. But I guess the concern I have is that I totally agree with the, the way this all starts out. Like, Section 2 starts out and says, "No qualification for eligibility to be an elector or other prerequisite to voting may be imposed. No ordinance regulation or other law regarding the administration of elections may be enacted, and no standard practice procedure or policy may be applied in a manner that results in an impairment of the right to vote for any protected class member." Agreed. We all agree with that. I think that's beyond question. But then it gets into the way this will happen, and I just can't believe what I'm reading here. Maybe you can start by helping me understand this concept of racially polarized voting as a start. And I'll just share the definition that's in the bill, which says, "Means voting in which the candidate or electoral choice preferred by protected class members," and I assume that means the definition in protected class above that, which is people who are referenced as a race, color, or language minority group, "diverges from the candidate or electoral choice preferred by other electors." I think that merely that definition assumes that people are voting based on race. And I think that applies to everyone as well. They're suggesting that Caucasian people are going to prefer a Caucasian candidate, and I think it says that minority voters might prefer a minority candidate. And I just, I don't think that's true, and I think that's an assumption that's made throughout this bill. And I just, am I misunderstanding what racially polarized voting is and how it's used in this bill is my question. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and so if I may, I'd like to answer your question in two parts. So the first part that I heard was the question about intent. And I'd like to just make a note that there, if there was evidence of intent in any sort of election procedure or practice, that would certainly be covered by the provisions of this act, both implicitly and explicitly in certain parts of this bill. And so I just wanted to keep that in mind. But also, racially polarized voting, you mentioned the definition, actually, a racially polarized voting analysis. And I, just like my colleague Stephen earlier, I won't, I am not a PhD in statistical analysis, but as a litigator who has used racially polarized voting in voting rights cases, I can explain to you from a legal perspective and a lay perspective. Racially polarized voting does not assume racial preferences as an initial out, as an initial part of the analysis. It actually does the opposite. It doesn't look at all into, it doesn't assume anything at all with respect to if racial minorities vote a certain way or racial majorities vote a certain way. It actually answers that question. So if there is racially polarized voting, that means the answer to, the answer is that that divergence has occurred. If there is no racially polarized voting, then that means that there's not an evidence of that divergence. Hope that makes sense. But in, just as an initial matter, racially polarized voting analysis does not begin with that assumption whatsoever. The, it looks at the history of elections by precinct, it looks at the history of the racial demographics of those precincts, and then it makes, it draws those conclusions based on electoral histories. And then it tells us whether or not racially polarized voting has, has been occurring. And then it tells us whether or not racially polarized verdict, voting has, has been occurring, or has occurred.
I appreciate that answer, and, and that is somewhat helpful. Um, I do want to point out that the reason why I said that it was ironic about intent is because in Section B of that same Section Two that I was referring to, subsection B, it says, "In determining whether racially polarized voting by protected class members in a municipality occurs," you go down to subsection V, and it says, "Shall not require evidence concerning the intent of electors, elected officials, or such municipality to discriminate against protected class members." And I understand why, that it's more about the results. And I get that that's what we're at here. But I don't know that you can determine anything by the results of an election unless you were able to interview every voter and find out what their actual reason for casting a particular vote is. And I think that that's the flaw in this legislation, is it, it assumes racism where I don't know that it necessarily exists. As I had pointed out before, you know, this is a predominantly Caucasian country. I don't know what the statistics are. At least sixty percent, maybe much higher than that for all I know. Um, but yet, you would assume in a, in a, if that was the case, and that Caucasian people are, prefer a Caucasian, um, candidate, then Barack Obama would not have won election twice as President of the United States, but he did. And, um, I'm sure the converse is, is true also. And I mean, I think you can look around all over this country, and particularly when it comes to, uh, concentrations of minority voters in urban cities, um, even in here in Connecticut. I mean, there are plenty of Caucasian, um, or Hispanic, uh, people elected to office, as well as African Americans. I think there's, there's a blend of people. Um, and I would suggest that they choose their candidate more about, on the politics of that person than they would on their skin color. I mean, am, am I wrong about suggesting that that's what this is all about? Is that this is, there's a suggestion that, that we have to combat the problem that people are making a vote based on skin color versus qualifications? Because I will tell you, um, most every Democrat person I know is gonna vote for the Democrat over the Republican, regardless of the race of either party, and the same would probably happen for Republicans as well. Um, I, so I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that, that race is that, that important to the decision-making that people make for elections. Um, but anyway, I don't, I don't want to monopolize the conversation. I'm, I'm really just trying to get an answer from you, so I understand, um, is, is, that, that seems to be what this bill is trying to combat, which is racially pro- polarized voting, and people choosing candidates by skin color, and the game being rigged so that's who they end up with. Is that correct through, Mr. Chairman?
Um, I can, uh, I can answer this in several parts, so I'm not gonna try to, I'm gonna try to be concise. Uh, but I, I'd point out a few things. So, uh, with respect to racially polarized voting, for example, you pointed to, uh, the election of Barack Obama. Um, that election is actually, um, a pretty exemplary example, not to, sorry to be repetitive, exemplary example of racially polarized voting, um, that is used in most racially polarized voting analyses because the election of Barack Obama was extremely racially polarized. It did not mean that he did not win elections, but it did mean, it does mean that there was evidence of an extreme divergence between voters of color and most white voters in those elections, such that racially polarized voting occurred despite his, um, his victory. Uh, and it doesn't, and I think, um, I would caution, you know, a conflation between racially polarized voting and just, um, and liability under the, particularly Section Two you're referring to. Um, and point out Section Two of this act actually mirrors Section Two of the Federal Voting Rights Act in many ways, but it improves upon it. And one of the ways it improves upon it is by, uh, providing a more, a very holistic, explicitly holistic approach, and identifying if a system or a voting practice or procedure has the effect of discriminating against protected classes of voters. And one of those things includes our fee, our PV. But you have, what you see in later sections, including in Section C one, there's an entire totality of circumstances analysis, which includes what, um, many different factors, which would go into understanding whether or not a system, uh, is discriminatory. So, um, the history of discrimination in a jurisdiction, the extent to which, uh, protected classes, um, uh, are, uh, suffer from the effects of discrimination, um, and things of that nature, that all go part and parcel with the actual discrimination of the entire, uh, of the election system at issue or the voting practice or procedure at issue. Um, and so it's not about, um, the analysis of racially polarized voting, two things. It doesn't end the conversation about, um, how a system discriminates against voters, but it also does not, um, it, we can't conflate it with other parts of the, um, with other parts of the bill.
I appreciate that answer. Uh, you started by saying that, you know, you mentioned the word liability, like whether or not you'd be liable under this bill for committing the crime effectively of, um, discrimination in setting up a election, uh, policy that is discriminatory. But what, what really surprised me is reading in Section B and Section C of Section Two that there are many, many factors that are restricted, that, that the, that are, cannot be taken into consideration. And I'll just name them. I, I already mentioned that they cannot consider evidence concerning the intent of electors. I, um, or elected officials, or the municipality to discriminate against protected class members. To me, I think that's the number one thing that you would want to consider, is if that was what the intent was. Uh, number two, uh, shall not consider evidence of explanations for voting patterns and election outcomes other than racially polarized voting. Well, what if there were many, many other reasons why people chose a particular candidate? One of them was better on, uh, foreign policy, uh, and we were potentially gonna be in a war, or, God knows what the reason might be. Uh, and then the next one says, "Shall not consider evidence that subgroups of protected class members have different voting patterns." And it goes on, and there's, there's other things too. I, I've never seen a situation where so many things directly related to the issue at hand were excused from being considered as part of the conversation. And then, um, I, I certainly, uh, listened intently to what you were saying about the totality of circumstances issue, which I, I can certainly understand the desire to. But if I read through this, these things are not relevant. The history of discrimination is, may play a factor in the world we live in today, but I don't know that it has a factor in determining whether someone's committing a particular act or policy that's implemented today. Um, B, the extent at which the protected class members have been elected to office. Uh, this is like, you know, the, the, um, um, the chicken or the egg thing. It's like, well, we're saying if, if not enough, uh, people of a certain skin color were elected to municipal office already, then it's proof that there is discrimination going on, and therefore that's evidence of the total, uh, picture. So therefore, we have to assume. Um, I, I, I think this, 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 this policy, well, I, I get it. No one wants discrimination. We want, we want people to be treated equally in this country. We want people to be judged on their merit and, and to be afforded every opportunity. I, I just feel like this, this bill goes very dangerously down the road of, of looking for, um, discrimination and racism where it may exist or may not exist. But the factors that are used to determine it here, I think, are, are somewhat predisposed to being racist themselves. Because if you're gonna suggest somehow that you have to assume something called racially polarized voting exists at all, you, you're implying something that you cannot verify. Um, and I'm not putting this on you. When I say you, I'm, I'm talking, talking more globally. Um, I, I really appreciate you, you being here and trying, trying to fill me in. Is, is there anything that you can say to me to get me to, um, a better place where I understand that the intent of this is, is absolutely to prevent bad policy from being implemented that might, um, effectively discriminate against any particular population? Um, because I'm not seeing it. What I'm seeing is a mechanism that will, um, look for, uh, racial discrimination where it may or may not exist, simply based on the results of an election. Um, and I don't, I, I think that people don't vote by race. I really don't think they do. So anyway, I, that's, that's my question, Mr. Chairman. And I'll leave it at that, and I hope we can have many more conversations to work on and craft the best possible Voting Rights bill that we can. Thank you.